I will now call to order. The Withfield Town Council meeting, Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street, Withfield, Virginia. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Hand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, next on the agenda is actually approval of the agenda. I want to need a motion or...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend agenda to include a closed meeting pursuant to state code 2.2-3711A8, legal consultation with council regarding health care.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. This would be a roll call vote. We'll start with Ms. Johnson, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Johnsona, Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Aye. Joseph Hand, aye.
That is unanimous. Next on the agenda is just a notification. If necessary, we'll have, we can have a recess at 7:00 PM. Next is the consent agenda, which results minutes of the work session of January 21st, 2025, minutes of the regular meeting of January 27th, 2025, and minutes of the special meeting of January 13th, 2025, and February 3rd, 2025. I need a motion.
So move, Madam Mayor.
A motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is, on the agenda is citizens' period. And we do have, at this moment, one person sign, come up and speak. So I will invite Ms. Seacrest to come to the podiums, state your name and your address into the mic, please, for the minutes. Seacrest?
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to ask you to give some consideration to enforcing the law. As the managing member of Old State Mall, I tend to field a lot of complaints that do not come in your direction from shy business owners. From secondhand marijuana smoke that drives off customers to parking laws that are not enforced. Withfull's downtown businesses are its livelihood, its lifeblood. Money in their pockets can fund new programs, plus bring in more businesses. If customers cannot get to the businesses because parking spaces are taken up all day by tenants and their employees, then the businesses do not thrive. Because I worked in Blowing Rock, North Carolina, I have printouts of some of the thoughts Blowing Rock has been having about parking. We moved to Virginia in 2004. I hope they may help with your thinking. These are legal ways that we can control parking in downtown Withfull. Please, lack of parking enforcement is a real problem for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I elaborate on that just a little bit, Ms. Seacrest? Yes, well, I just, I just want to share something from, actually, I had that to bring up on my council. I've had citizens reach out to me, business owners, from that section about the parking there on Tazewell Street, as well as the, I guess, the smell coming from Main Street as well. And I have forwarded that to the staff, to the best of my knowledge, that is being looked into. From, from my understanding, I know it's at least on record that, that we've had, that we've had some complaints. Yes, ma'am. And I appreciate you coming. The other business owner was going to try to come tonight, and she, she could not come this evening, but, yes, ma'am.
Well, one of them said she had talked until she was blue on the face.
Well, I've, I've sent in...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. And I have sent in some emails. I have in documentation she has actually taken as well. And I think they have more documentation, it's just not been sent in. Yes, ma'am, but I was going to bring that up, that, that's on my, like, little council member time, and actually on my hands, so it's...
Appreciate it. Thank you, she will too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
You may.
All right, next on the agenda is to consider the request of the Withfull Police Department for traffic control on Friday, October 31st, 2025, to conduct the church, street, trunk or tree event.
Who are you guys? I'm aware of Ms. Seacrest's complaint. Because I spoke to the lady about face, about the alleyway being used by home and commercial, and about some of the people coming out of the vape shop, smoking, you know, weed and so forth. And I passed this information on to my patrol lieutenant, which he has passed it on to the officers to be on, you know, just to patrol the area, and just to look out for, you know, this illegal activity going on. And also told Mary to contact the lady that owns that alleyway, and have her contact me, you know, about putting up some kind of signage, you know, no trespassing or no parking in this alleyway, so that we would have the capability of, when we ride by, we can look and see who is out there. Because it's hard to see when that big box truck is back into the alleyway, who's behind or what they're doing. But, it's home and commercial. They own Burger Haven. So their employees, they park along Tazewell Street, they park inside the alleyway, which prevents us, you know, observing the area like we should. And the lady that owns the alleyway, she hadn't contacted me yet. And I spoke to Ms. Castle probably last week. I went up there, we went outside, we walked around, and we looked around, and there's a lot of, you know, trash from Burger Haven, you know, the people coming out, they're throwing their foods out on the sidewalks and so forth, and, you know, their cigarette droppings. And, you know, with the parking, it's hard for us to enforce it because of the new law that, you know, we can't mark the tires like we used to. So if we could, you know, come up with some kind of parking, you know, device or something like that, you know, to allow us to, to assist us in moving these vehicles on. Because I can see her complaint too. I ride by every day, and I see the same vehicles parked along Tazewell Street.
I was thinking, and I could be wrong, but I was thinking, I was thinking the police department had taken by, maybe downtown Withfull too, I could be wrong, but I was thinking that, that some notifications were taken by to each business, because I remember talking about that, 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 that the employees are, that they're asking the employees to park somewhere different. And am I wrong on that?
I think you're correct. I talked to Todd Wolfert about this when you told me, and he said he would go by and talk to the business, the new business owners about that policy. Yes, ma'am.
Because I was thinking Lieutenant Bard even mentioned that they had went by, because I think we'd had this problem before, with, we do have the signs up, but they went, they went around, I think supposedly notified, like, all, all business owners to the best of my, and that's been, but I don't know if Burger Haven was there yet. I don't think so.
I think Burger Haven is the biggest problem right now. Their employees and the box truck, home and commercial, is using Tazewell Street and alleyway. I think they're the biggest problem right now with that situation.
We can have a conversation with them about that.
Okay.
See if we can make, get some movement in that direction, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Seacrest? Ms. Seacrest? Can you come up to the mic, please?
Some of the suggestions from Blowing Rock may help too, because they've been thinking about it for long enough now that they've gone through the legal process. But if a times, I, I see what you're saying about the timestamped picture not being the best indicator, although maybe if it was of the tire with the tire stem on it. Just, just, I, I, that was just a thought I had, as a possibility, deal with not being able to put a mark on the tires. Thank you. Thank you all of you, I appreciate it.
We've had a discussion among the staff about a meeting next Thursday with downtown Withfull to discuss this problem and the police department, see if we can come up with some good solutions to the problem. We're not, we're not completely ignorant of the problem, we're aware of it, it's, we're just trying to come up with solutions. I understand.
Mr. Moore, you said that meeting was next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
So next on the agenda, one more time would be to consider the request of the Withfull Police Department for traffic control on Friday, October 31st, 2025, to conduct the church, street, trunk or tree event. Everybody may be aware of that, but Assistant Manager Ms. Holton can answer any questions or make a light if you have any questions or questions. Not, needs consideration by town council to approve the request of the Withfull Police Department and traffic control, conduct the church or tree event. I need a motion.
Send me.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is to consider the request of Downtown Withfull Incorporated for traffic control on Friday, July 4th, 2025, to conduct the Downtown Withfull 4th of July Celebration and Street Festival. Once again, council has any questions? Ms. Holton is here to assist us with that? Does anybody have any questions? So, consideration by town council to approve the request of the Downtown Withfull Incorporated for traffic control to conduct the Downtown Withfull 4th of July Celebration and Street Festival. I need a motion.
Send me.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Is there any discussion?
The only question that I'll have is, you know, with the barriers that we fill with water, if those are used, will they be filled with water?
Absolutely.
Okay, if, if they're used. Thank you.
Questions? Other questions? A motion and a second, and no other questions, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? Aye as have it. Next is to consider the request from Downtown Withfull Incorporated traffic control on Saturday, October 25th, 2025, to conduct a 2025 Mayhem on Main Street event. Council have any questions, Ms. Holton?
Same question with the barriers, so just, thank you, just happened to ask, sorry. Thank you.
All right, consideration by town council to approve the request of Downtown Withfull Incorporated for traffic control to conduct the 2025 Mayhem on Main Street event. I need a motion.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Have a motion, or have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? A motion passes. Next is to consider the request of Downtown Withfull Incorporated for traffic control to conduct the Downtown Withfull Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 6th, 2025. Have any questions, Ms. Holton?
I don't think they use barriers on those, I think they use different things, so thank you.
No further questions. Consideration by town council to approve the request of Downtown Withfull Incorporated for traffic control to conduct the Downtown Withfull Christmas Parade. I need a motion.
Send me.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is to consider ordinance number 1442, ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 10, Planning and Community Development, Article 2, Plan and Commission, Section 10 to 20, compensation of members of the Code of the Town of Withfull, Virginia, and first and final reading. And Moore, do you have anything to...
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. At the last, one of the last work sessions we had, it was proposed that we increase the payment to planning commission members from $75 to $200, and that's what this ordinance would propose, a change to that.
Further questions? Or concerns? Consideration by town council to adopt the ordinance number 1442 on first and final reading. I need a motion.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None. This is going to be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Aye.
Atkins, aye.
Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is to consider adopting the fiscal year 2025-26 budget schedule. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Got a promotion. Yes, as, as you realize, annually, you adopt a schedule for adoption of the budget, and this is proposing that schedule, starting on May the 12th with the reading of the budget ordinance, the 27th with a public hearing for that, and then a potential to adopt it on June the 9th, and that gives you an extra council meeting in there, should you decide to make changes or delay that budget approval on the 9th.
Any questions for... Or consideration by town council to adopt a fiscal year 2025-26 budget schedule? Have a motion?
Send me.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here are none. Again, this is a roll call vote, vote. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Johnsona. Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda is a presentation by Assistant Town Manager Laine Holton regarding the Mount Rogers Planning District Pre-Disaster Hazard mitigation plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, in your packet, there was a staff report about this item on your agenda. As you recall, back in November, I did provide the town council with some baseline information about the Mount Rogers Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan. And this plan is a state and federal requirement for localities across the United States. The Mount Rogers Planning District Commission prepares the plan and assists both the Town of Withfull and other communities in this region with the five-year plan update and approval by both FEMA and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And then after those two agencies review and approve the plan, what happens is the plan comes back to the localities, and each member locality in the Mount Rogers District will also review and approve the resolution for the plan adoption. The plan itself is quite lengthy, it's over 400 pages. We did set up a link on the town website, and that link was in your staff report, for you to be able to click on that and look at that. Sort of the meat and potatoes of the plan is the strategies that With County and the Town of Withfull propose to address hazards in our locality. And in your staff report, I provided some bullets that summarize those strategies. They include maintaining access to the Sand Mountain Radio Tower for emergency communications, providing backup energy generation for critical town facilities such as public safety buildings, water and wastewater treatment plants and pump stations, floodproofing of both the water and the wastewater treatment plant, and stormwater flood, flooding mitigation measures such as storage ponds, low-impact development improvements, and upsizing culverts. So essentially, the strategies is our wish list of things that we would like to achieve in the near future, within the next five years, given that funding is available. There's no absolute promise to do those things, it's just general planning exercise. So with that being said, we recommend that the council consider approving the motion to adopt the attached resolution, and the resolution itself will adopt the Mount Rogers Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them for you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, it's consideration by town council to adopt a resolution regarding the Mount Rogers Planning District Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan. A motion?
Send me.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. This will be a roll call vote, and Councilman Hand?
Joseph Hand, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnsona.
Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings by Town Clerk Sherry Corbin, please.
Mayor, I have several. The special meeting, which was a closed meeting of the Withfull Town Council, scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 11th, at 4:00 PM, at the Withfull Meeting Center, has been canceled due to the impending inclement weather. The Withfull Building Code Appeals Board, scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th, at 4:00 PM, has been canceled due to the impending inclement weather. The Withfull Tree Advisory Committee will meet on Thursday, February 13th, at 8:30 AM in the Conference Room A, here in the Municipal Building. The Withfull Planning Commission meeting, scheduled for Thursday, February 13th, has been canceled. The Town of Withfull Municipal offices will be closed and all services curtailed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. The council work session will be held on Tuesday, February 18th, at 4:00 PM, here in the council chambers. The Downtown Withfull Incorporated Board of Directors will meet on Tuesday, February 18th, at 5:30 PM, at the Downtown Withfull Office. The Withfull Redevelopment Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, February 19th, at 12 noon, at the Housing Authority Office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, February 20th, at 10 AM, at the Water Plant in Austenville. And the next regular scheduled meeting of the Withfull Town Council will be held on Monday, February 24th, at 6:00 PM, here in the council chambers. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, now the business, we're going to continue discussion regarding possibly changing the due date for the real property and personal property tax taxes. Moore, do you have anything to share with us?
Well, as you recall, we discussed this at the January 27th meeting, and asked if, if there was any issue with that. I've talked to treasure about that, and she said that there's not an issue with cash flow if we change that date, and she would recommend that we be changed to March the 5th for receipt of those taxes. There's adequate income from other sources that cash flows, she doesn't feel cash flow will be a problem if we delay it until that date. I think you talked about doing that in March, so that's what I think would be acceptable if you're, if you concur.
So, on here says, no action required at this time. Is this come to vote on next meeting?
You could instruct staff to prepare an ordinance to that effect if you'd like. That, we just can't actually enact it because it has to be done by... If you want a motion to authorize staff to prepare ordinance to that effect, that would be great.
I'd like to make that motion. That great.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion for March to change the taxes instead of December, instead of doing December from now on into March.
March the 5th.
March the 5th of 20, that'd be 2026 from here on out, is that correct? Or, yes. Yep.
I'd like to second that motion, please. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Here are none. I'm sure this needs to be a roll call vote. Let's start with...
Johnsona.
Atkins, aye.
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Hand, aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you all so much.
All right, we are now moving forward to council member time. The hand, let's start with you.
Um, just a couple of things. I have spoken to a couple of people at Old State's Mall. I have gone over and looked at this spilt food and talked to them about the parking issue, so just want them to know that we will do the best we can to come up with something, at least have some good talk about what we might do to change that over there, so. And I, and we had a public safety meeting this past week, and I really appreciated that it was digital, there wasn't a lot of extra paper. So I want to thank Mrs. Holton for, for that. I thought that was really good, and if we could sort of that pattern, it would really make a big change over time. I really, I really appreciated that. So thank you. That's all I have.
I do have a couple of things. One is sort of a question announcement type thing, but the, the garden of odd balloons, we're already getting people to, starting to ask the questions. Last year, we did $10 for the, the first one was free, the second one was $10, and we just, and we agreed not to do a third one. So they just need to know if they were going to keep on that this upcoming year for gardens up at the, for that one.
For the dog. She's, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
So, up at the water tower, property, you fill up and, and so people can use it as a garden, want to rent.
Oh, a garden, a garden. I got you. Not the dog park. Sorry. Changes location.
Now, that seems, Holly, you think that seems to work.
I, I think so. I think it's a good benefit for the citizens, plus, you know, to actually be able to grow your own things if you don't have room at your house. Yes, ma'am.
We cut it down, it used to be $20.
I've seen that in...
First one's free, the second one is $10, and if everybody's agreement that, I don't think we, we have a consensus on it, but I'll let them know.
I've seen that in some of the inner cities, and I think it's a great idea.
The other thing that somebody brought to me a while back, and I was, I was told it was in the budget, but either cleaning or painting the water tower, I would just ask staff to look in the budget and see if it is in there, and what is it in for.
It is looking pretty bad on the north side. And I think it can just be washed instead of painted, hopefully.
Yeah, I think that we'd get away with that too, but I'm, I didn't know if it really truly was in the budget or not.
I suspect it's time, it's time to repaint it, though. It's been a number of years, it has.
Can I...
You can tell on that one side, that it just probably needs a really good pressure washer.
Can I suggest the color? Pink, if that's okay? Just want to throw that in there.
Pink stripes, I'll be, yeah.
All right, and that's all I had.
The only thing I had on my list was the smell coming from a place on Main Street, and like I said, I've had several complaints on that, and also the parking on Taswell, that I've driven through there myself, and it's, it's, it's tight, and... So thank you, and that's all, actually.
I don't have anything. My, Mr. Moore has taken care of mine. I emailed it, and he took care of it.
All right, is there anything under miscellaneous?
I do have a few updates relative to that, parking, relative to parking. We did get the signs up at the library, and I noticed there's no longer people parking on the right-hand side, which looks to be an improvement. on the right-hand side, which looks to be an improvement. Yohad asked me to be proactive relative to inclement weather, and we have, if you have noticed, maybe even the signs out, close this building until 10 o'clock tomorrow. If it gets worse, we will close early also, and that includes the community center, the meeting center, and the visitor's center, and the museum, so we are being proactive. It probably won't snowdrop because of that, but we are being proactive.
So, we're not open until 10:00 tomorrow?
Open until 10:00 for all those facilities.
Thank you.
And I think that's about it, except that we have found that we cannot meet for our interviews tomorrow evening. The date that was proposed does not work for everyone, and I was just wondering if February 25th might do everybody for an evening interview session.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Tuesday, Tuesday the 25th, yes.
I've got another board meeting at 6:15.
Won't work for you, looks like that date's not going to work for much.
I have plans for.
What about Wednesday, would that possibly?
I cannot do Wednesday.
Wednesday won't work, okay.
Sunday, 20?
24th is the council meeting.
What about the previous Friday? I just hate for it to get pushed out so far.
I think that's the date we were proposing, and it does not work.
In the 20th, too?
20th is a Thursday, would be the Thursday before.
I can do Thursday.
Seem to suit everybody.
Thursday, Thursday, one more time.
But I'll just have to work, I'll have to work it out. I have my.
For the reasons I described in my email to you, I may or may not be.
For the 18th?
So that's probably not used that day.
Is a works, we have a work session scheduled for the 18th. Can we not do interviews on the 18th? No one available then?
Not, no.
On the 18th, okay, he's not available, you're not available on the 18th?
Right.
Are you, are you available on the 18th?
No ma'am, no ma'am.
Yeah, I had you on my calendar.
No ma'am, my love, for the reasons.
I did, I'm sorry.
The reasons in your email, remember on the 17th, that week.
I may need him.
There's a, there's a Thursday, you could go to the Thursday, the 27th. I don't know if you guys are available or not. No, she was not available on the 2.
I'm not available on the 26th.
There is the Thursday, the 27th, you haven't discussed yet.
I could do.
Don't know that. We can go the next week, which would be the, what would be our next option, Mr.?
I can work out the 27th since it's at a time. Probably the 27th of Wednesday.
That works for me.
27th is a Thursday.
I cannot do Wednesday.
The 27th is a Thursday.
The 27th is on a Thursday.
It looks like that's a potential meeting time, okay. We'll see what we can do with that. Then we've got to get the four candidates here at that time, so.
What time do you think we'll be starting those, instead of, because we have, we can talk about it in like three or four, what time would have, because if we start at 5:00, we're going to be there till?
Yes.
It's going to be late. For that late?
Maybe we can find one that can, well, we have a visual.
Yeah, so we do.
That can be first.
I just needed to know what time, whatever you all think.
We could see if we could start those as early as 3:00, if you'd like, if that would suit everyone.
That wouldn't work for you all, would it?
3:00, is that too early?
Yeah, I don't get off work until 4:30.
Okay, so we're at 5:00 at least, yeah, okay. Looks like we'll be here a little while.
We might not. The 27th? I would say that the Splash Pad has a meeting that day, but.
I'm sure.
If they need to. All right, so we'll go with that, right now?
For now, yes, we'll run that up the flagpole with the candidates, see how that works. I would expect they will be here, if they want the job.
Anything else to come before council at this moment? Council does now finds it necessary to go into a closed session. And a closed session, we need a motion to amend the agenda to include the, sorry, that was, closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A8, legal consultation and counsel regarding benefits. I have a motion, do I have a?
Yes, I motion.
Motion, motion to a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second, discussion. All in favor of going closed session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We are now in closed session.
Now that the discussion has concluded, on this matter we will reconvene in open session and certify that to the best of our knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Inflammation Act and only such public business matters as we identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened. We heard discussion and considered if I have a motion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, this will be a roll call vote. Vice Mayor?
Johnson Aye.
Atkins Aye.
Taylor Aye.
Patterson Aye.
Hand Aye.
We are now in open session. Council have anything else to bring to the plate this evening? All right, we are adjourned.